Good evening, all. Sorry for the delay. Welcome to the Monday, March 9th, Harupa Unified School District Board. Now in session. Roll call, please. Here.
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 Trusty Garcia?
Here.
Here.
Darian Warhawk?
Here.
Miguel Sbarza?
Here.
Jasmine Leva?
Here.
Cassie Rivera-Abson?
Thank you. Jasmine Leva, can you do the honors of our flag salute? And before we sit down, can we stay, remain standing for a moment of silence? Thank you.
I have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We would like to hold a moment of silence for Stephen Ortiz, home and hospital student who passed away on February 14th. The board would like to express their condolences to the Ortiz family. Thank you. You may be seated. Trusty Charde, can you do the honors of our inspirational comment this evening?
Yes, thank you, President Garcia. I'm sorry, Ortega. There is nothing more important to our nation's future, to our homeland security, and to our economy than ensuring that we have a top-notch educational system that is the envy of the world. We also have a responsibility to ensure that every individual has the opportunity to receive a high-quality education, from pre-kindergarten to elementary and secondary to special education, to technical and higher education and beyond. Both those quotes were from Jim Jeffords. And I'd like to add a little bit to that. From a personal experience, recently, I was at Read Across America and at Ina Arbuckle, and I had the opportunity to go to several classes, first grade kindergarten, or second grade, a kindergarten class. And I also got to go to the Spectrum Group at Ina Arbuckle. And I was amazed to see the teachers and the aides and the students, how they interacted. When I went there, I was dressed as a cat in a hat, so I wasn't just a normal person. But all of the kids recognized me and said, "The cat in the hat." And I think it's amazing what our educational system has done over the years. When my husband and I got married, he introduced me to his cousin that lived up in Sacramento. He was about 10 years older than my husband. And when he was born at the time, they called it Mongoloid. And they wouldn't take them in the public school system because they didn't have teachers who knew how to handle them, how to teach them. And they had a combination of a lot of different disabilities. Well, his mother decided she was not going to let him down. She was not going to send him away to a private school because she didn't have the money. She was going to teach him everything she could. So she homeschooled him. But we are now so lucky today to have teachers and aides that have been educated in special education and teaching and are not letting just those students slip to the wayside. We're having all, everyone has an equal opportunity to have a good education. And I'm very proud of our district for the way we have brought that up to the view of other people. Our kids intermingle with all of their students at school. They see each other. They say hi to them, even though they're not in those classes. And I think it's wonderful. That's my inspiration. Just when you see a student that has special needs or that is working with a student that doesn't have special needs, just think about where our education has come from for the last 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Reports from closed session?
Yes, we have some bittersweet news and some very good news to share from closed session. First, the bittersweet. In closed session, by a vote of four to zero, with one trustee absent for the vote, the board voted to accept the resignation and retirement of Ms. Denise Collins, Senior Executive Assistant. And now for the good news. In closed session, by a vote of four to zero, with one trustee absent for the vote, the board voted to appoint Ms. Susan Worley as Senior Executive Assistant to replace Ms. Collins. And Ms. Worley is here. I know I saw her there in the back. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. 2019, 2020 Student Board Members, Mr. Duchon.
Good evening, lady and gentlemen. Why don't we start with the lady in Rubito High School? Welcome.
Good evening, district members. My name is Jasmine Leva, and I hope you all had a great weekend. This month, our girls' basketball went to second-round state playoffs. We are very proud of our girls. It has been years since our girls' basketball has accomplished something like this. Our color guard won first place runner-up and third place overall in the whole competition. Our esports played at Harupa Valley in place. This Wednesday, our RHS choir has a concert at Harupa Valley High School at 7:00 p.m. This Friday, we also have our College and Career Fair. And last week, our ASB started our Cornhole March Madness, where we invite staff and students to get into groups of two, into a pair of two, and compete against our other teams. This week, we have our second round. Our champions from the two previous years have teamed up in winning with the other teams. Our spring sports have officially started, and our spring break starts March 21st. Upcoming home sports we have this week are swimming at 3:15 home. And we will be having our yearly Rubito High School Invitational March 21st, Saturday. Something that my ASB president wanted me to report is the concern amongst the three high schools is our highest honors. And they just wanted me to give a report back to them, why it had been taken away. That's all I have. Thank you.
Just for, maybe you could get me more information because highest honors has not been taken away. But we can talk later. Miguel, I'm sorry.
It's all good. No problem. Okay. Hi, everyone. I hope everyone's having a great day. So recently, we have began our WASC visit. That started on Sunday, so we had a meet-and-greet in our library. Teachers and parents and a few other students were there, just generally talking with them. Me and two other ASB leaders gave them a tour around campus, which was wonderful. They were a delight to take around campus. And it showed them all that we have, and it showed me all that I knew about the campus. So I thought that was pretty neat. We also, today, we had a few meetings with WASC. The first interaction that WASC had was with 24 student leaders around campus. And we talked about campus culture advisory periods and our academics. We also have our senior rally approaching very scarily quickly. That's going to be held on Friday, the 20th, so that's next Friday. And our theme is Journey Through the Decades. And after that, we have our spring break starting up. And after spring break, everyone's going to come back to a Club Food Week. So Club Food Week is basically where all the clubs pick up food or whatever they want to vend and meet in the quad. And so it's a good experience, or it's a good way for clubs to fundraise. And really, it acts like a club rush because people always try to upsell their club. "Oh, well, maybe you should join." It's just a great, it's a great time. Before our WASC visit, we had our eighth-grade preview day as well as our Future Warrior Night. So our eighth-grade preview day was on a Saturday, and that went exceptionally well. We had eighth graders from a lot of different middle schools come. And we showed them around the school. We gave them a tour. We also had them play games. And we had teachers come up and show them the different pathways. That way, they can start the year right. Our Future Warrior Night was aimed more towards the parents. We had clubs and classes as well set up booths outside of the gym. And that allowed parents to decide what information they wanted to take from that, so they could visit wherever they wanted. It was very free-flowing. There wasn't a lot of pressure. It wasn't put under a time constraint. And I think a lot of parents really appreciated that because they just had the opportunity to just maybe catch up with some old friends that they've seen. A lot of these parents have had students in the district before. So it just gave them an opportunity to get an update on what has been going on at the high school. After that, we had the parents and students go into the gym. The students were put on one side. The parents were put on the other. And so we gave a little speech. The band, choir, and cheer performed, and everybody loved that. Then the parents were taken to the theater for a separate, a separate meeting while our students were in the gym for a presentation that Linker put together. It was just another intro into high school and getting them ready with a little bit of fun games in there. Also, I would like to just mention, I'm sure it's going to be mentioned later, but our Patriot Cheer Team recently took home the JAM's National Champion Title for the fifth year in a row. Is that not crazy? Applause. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Darian, Harupa Valley High School. My mic wasn't on, but, okay.
Good evening, everyone. March is a busy and fun month for Harupa Valley High School. Spring sports have just begun, and we have a lot of home games all this week. On March 10th, we have a baseball game which begins at 3:15 versus La Cier High School. And on March 11th, we have a track meet at 3:15 versus Rubito and a swim meet versus Shadow Hills, which also starts at 3:15. And on March 12th, we have another baseball game versus Patriot High School. And lastly, on March 12th, we have a tennis game versus Ontario High School, starting at 3:15. Unfortunately, our Valentine's Dance was canceled due to low ticket sales and lack of preparation. But ASB has put together a dance that the students are very excited about. We're having a Sadies on March 20th at Castle Park. This dance will be from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. The park is open to the public until 9:00. And after 9:00, Harupa Valley will have seven exclusive rides to themselves and mini golf in the arcade. The tickets are $25 with an ASB card and $35 without an ASB card. The tickets include the rides and all-you-can-eat buffet, which includes burgers, the veggie burgers, cookies, chips, soda, water, et cetera, mini golf, and the arcade, like I said earlier. We are also having a Sadies Proposal Competition happening until the end of this week. The competition is to see who has the most creative and cute proposal. Their proposal must be recorded and sent into the Harupa Valley Instagram page. And on Wednesday, students begin to vote on their favorite one. Whichever couple gets the most votes get free tickets to Sadies. Please check out our Instagram page, @JVHSJaguars, or our YouTube videos this week in the Jag Nation. We have another Norte Cultural hosted by our Jag Migos Club coming up on Friday, March 13th. There will be lots of concessions like toasty locos, entertainment, and different booths. Our staff band, Jungle Cats, will be performing there as well. It's from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., and it's $5 at the door. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate all of your participation and commitment to doing this. I do want to comment that one of the things, I attended that WASC visit yesterday. What I really, really liked is the committee was much more interested in the students and their parents than anybody else. At least during the meet-and-greet, they spent time speaking with all of you. And I thought that was a really good sign because no one speaks more about a school than the students go there. So thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to recognizing Patriot High School Cheer. Mr. DeBrat, Trillo. Thank you.
Good evening, President Ortega. Tonight, I have the pleasure of recognizing the Patriot High School Cheer team who recently traveled to Las Vegas to compete, as we just heard, in the JAM's High School National Competition. The Patriot Warrior Team claimed the title of national champions for the fifth crazy time in the Varsity Cheer Level 3.1. And they also got a second place in the Varsity Sideline, losing to the eventual first-place team by only 2/10 of 1%. So that's like a hair, or less. Administration would like to congratulate the team and their efforts and their resilience, dedication, grit, hard work, commitment to their team, to their sport, and to their school. And congratulations to Coach Bukarell and to Mr. Hernandez as well.
Can you guys quickly stand up so you guys can formally get recognized, please?
And I just want to stay while you're standing. We are so proud. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations again. You're very welcome. And we'll move on to item three, Board Member Comments. Trusty Regal, please.
Thank you, President Ortega. Congratulations, Patriot Cheer. You guys, I did see some of the videos online, and your performances were outstanding. But it's kind of funny that you're all sitting there so quiet and shy because those videos, not the same people. But congratulations. Well-deserved. Your performances are absolutely amazing. And Student Board Members, thank you for the updates. We really appreciate that. To keep us all in the loop, we can't be everywhere. We wish we could attend all of the functions and things. So thank you for, you know, sharing what is coming from the schools. I also, this week, or several of us, attended the Riverside County Office of Education, State of Education. Dr. White is our superintendent for Riverside County. And just as usual, she did an outstanding job. And Dr. White really has invested into our students and brings them to the luncheon and has them perform or whether being recognized or any part of their involvement. She definitely brings to the table and shares across the county. So this year's recognition, or the focus for 2020 is Year of the Youth. So if you guys, I don't know if we have these in our district or if they've been sent over from the county office, but definitely highlights, and we're going to continue that. Last year was deliberate act of kindness. So this year, she really, you know, wants to improve that and have our students have a voice, but also get them enthusiastic about their education and focus on their future and their career goals. And then Denise, just for the record, we reluctantly accepted her resignation. But I just want to thank you for your years of service within the district. And, you know, I wish you well and look forward to retirement and taking some vacations. And hopefully, there are places that you're not going to, Elliot's not going to call you and ask for something as, no offense, Elliot. And Susan, welcome. Welcome. We look forward to working with you in, you know, attending the board meetings and being that guiding light from the district office. So welcome and congratulations on your promotion. That's all I have.
Thank you. Up next, Trusty Garcia.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations, Patriot Cheer. Awesome. Really, really proud of you guys. I know every year, you know, you do this as well. So congratulations. And Student Board Members, just want to thank you all for the updates, but also for your commitment, dedication, your leadership that you, you know, demonstrate for your fellow students. So keep up the great work. And finally, Mrs. Collins, you know, we're going to miss you, Denise. I think Denise is a superwoman around here. And she takes care of all the business, especially makes sure the board is up to date all the time. And so we're going to definitely miss her. But I know it's time to move on to the next phase in life, and we look forward to that, and so happy for you. And Mrs. Worley, congratulations again. And just want you to know that the board has every confidence in you, and we know you'll do a great job. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trusty Charde, please.
Yes, thank you, President Ortega. It seems that our students and staff in this district are very unbeatable. Congratulations to our Student Board Members for all the work, hard work you do to come and prepare for this on top of your classes. And for helping make, all of our students for helping make Riverside County number one, making in a 90.1% graduation rate. That was one of the big focuses. And Dr. White says she wants it to read 100% next year. So we have a lot of work to do, so we're asking you to help. And I know that you all are going to do a great job in your coming, whether you're a senior, a junior, sophomore, or whatever. Congratulations to Patriot for your fifth consecutive championship. And I want to also congratulate Rubito's Color Guard, who also did a good job, and they'll probably be congratulated at another meeting. But we did just get that word today that they won over the weekend in Oregon. So it seems like we can win outside the state very well. We can compete against other people and do very well. And Dr. Hanson, of course, you and all your staff who participate in the Preparation of the Horizon. That is an outstanding information tool for all of us. And everything that's going on in this district seems to appear there. And it just keeps you updated on everything that's going on. And they did amazing video on there for the Facilities Master Plan that's on YouTube, and it is just outstanding. I thought it was really good, the teachers. You didn't necessarily see the faces that were talking, but you could, I knew some of the voices because I knew some of the people that did that. And I think it's just, it was an outstanding video. It was very, very well put together, showing how much the kids really enjoy their district, showing off some of their stuff, and the teachers too, and what a great job they all do. And as I said before, I went to Read Across America on March 2nd and participated there, and that was a lot of fun. And I think that is all I have for right now. My committee reports, I'll report on later. Thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Bradford, please.
Denise, maybe I just didn't want to say goodbye to you. Maybe that's why I forgot. You have been like our mother. You have taken care of us, continually kept us informed of everything that we needed to be at and to do. And I know that Susan's going to do the same type of job because she does that on some of the other committees that we've done. So I know that she's always, she's going to be a good trainee under Denise. She'll always have a special place in our heart, Denise. And you're always welcome to come back to the board meetings and see how things are going anytime. Thank you.
Trusty Bradford.
To our Student Board Members, I'm always happy when I see you here. And it makes me think of, I want to hear from you in 10 and 20 years and see what happened from what you learned here. So stay in touch with us, okay? And Miguel, I'm especially happy to hear about the warm welcome that you give to the incoming students and the parents. And I'm wondering, does this occur at the other high schools too? Do you put on? Okay. Well, I like what you do. So thank you very much because, you know, it's scary to be a teenager. And I remember hiding in some of my teachers' rooms at lunchtime because I just, I just didn't feel like I fit in. So I think you're doing a wonderful job. And cheer, if I wouldn't embarrass myself in public, I'd say something other than, "Yee-haw! Congratulations. We're so proud. Five years. That's spectacular." And what that says is how you're passing on your tribal knowledge and your enthusiasm, and most of all, obviously, your standard of excellence for the students who come behind you. So I am extremely pleased. And for your coaches, thank you for what you do for our students. Yay, coaches. And to the rest of you in the audience, parents, teachers, staff, interested community members, I know you have many ways that you could spend your Monday nights. And I am delighted to, although sometimes you scare me, I am delighted that you care enough to come and share the most basic of American principles, which is your opinion. When people ask me something about, about their school, I say, "Go talk to your teacher." You know, some students spend more time with their teachers than they do with their parents. Get to know your teacher. Get to know your principal. Be a volunteer at your student's school. So thank you very much, and I appreciate all of you being here tonight. Just to be official, though, okay, so yes, I went to, oh, it timed out on me. I was invited to Ina Arbuckle for Read Across America. I also went to Del Sol's Read Day on campus. And it's really interesting to see the, how much energy there is. I don't know if I could keep up with all of those. I went to the same State of the County Education Luncheon, as we mentioned. And again, JUSD was recognized for its Golden Bell Awards. And the last thing I'd like to say is when you leave here tonight, if the weather cooperates with us, you please look at the moon and appreciate the super moon that we have. And it's called the super worm moon, which I like very much, being a gardener. But if any of you remember or heard your parents singing from the musical Hair of the '60s, talking about the age of Aquarius, that's what this moon is supposed to represent, peace and understanding and goodwill amongst people. But let's not just wait for an astronomical occasion. Let's practice the kindness that we see our students greeting each other. Thank you.
Thank you. And I too, like my board colleagues, want to congratulate the cheer. I know that when I went to school, I know I look really young, but I promise I'm over 21. I went to Rubito High School, and I know a lot of my friends were in cheer. And it wasn't something viewed at like a sport, you know? So your sportsmanship is also showing that it's a dedication and a passion for you all, five years in a row. So we, as the board and the district, are very proud for you coming back home with that big W again. So thank you for your dedication. And Student Board Members, we gave you those number ones because we always want you to also remember that you are the number-one reason why we all have these very important meetings and why we do what we do every single day. It's because of you. We want to remind you that you are the number-one reason why we, again, are here. You all bring us together, and you are our biggest accountability partners, not in crime, but in education. So we thank you for being our number-one, always. And I did attend, from last board meeting to now, I did attend a couple events. Some outside of our local area. One of them was California Latino School Boards Association. We had a very successful event where I think we were very proud. It's our first summit where superintendents, so this summit is basically throughout California, where we're traveling through California to really equip school board members with the tools that maybe they don't have, or just the hot topics in those areas. So it was our first summit where actually the superintendent, there was like five superintendents in attendance, which was amazing to us because that shows that commitment as well. There was school board members. And for our first time too, there was the president, the teacher union president present too. So a lot of us were having those hot-topic discussions that we need to have. And it's not only, obviously, here in our local area, but we see it in other areas. So when we do come to the Inland Empire, I'm hoping that that does happen again. And this was in Brawley, so it's borderline of Mexicali, where a lot of the issues are very much different. But then again, we come together and we realize that some of them overlap. So we were really happy to have a very successful summit. The funding, again, for these summits happened because we have a grant from the Bill Gates that we can travel around California and talk and have these conversations to best, again, help us, help, you know, the students and those that we lead. Also, I participated, like my board colleagues, in the State of Education Lunch with Dr. Also, I participated, like my board colleagues, in the State of Education Lunch with Dr. White. It's always just so beautiful to, again, come together with superintendents, teachers, educators, that are really, even behind the scenes, she also recognizes, you know, from the number one person to the person that needs to be recognized, there's nobody left behind on her eyes and in her agenda. So it's always really nice to come together through the whole Riverside County to, more than anything, also celebrate education, public education and public funding. One of the events that I was going to attend next week was, and I say was because it was canceled, the Legislative Action Day, and where we're also advocating for funding, for funding in our schools and our local areas. It's not fair that we want to progress as education and public education, yet we don't have funding to do that. And we unfortunately won't gather this year, but we will continue to do the best work that we can in advocating for funding in our educational system. And for all the women and international women, congratulations. It was our day yesterday, and why not every day too? So congratulations. Happy International Women's Day, and we'll leave the rest for the end.
And we'll have administrative reports. Mr. Duchon. Oh, sorry. Public verbal comments. I did not want to skip them, I promise. We have Ken Johnson.
President Ortega, Superintendent Duchon, members of the board, good evening. My name is Ken Johnson. I don't know any of you, but I intend to get to know you. I'm a resident in the community. The first item I wanted to talk to you about is to, as the parent of a child here in the school district, I'd like to know if you have a comprehensive plan to deal with COVID-19 and if you have included the employee organizations in the development of the plan. I don't know what your format here is if you interact with the public, but I'd like to get that plan in writing, please, and I can provide you with my information. Also, the interim report, it was in black and white. There are a number of charts and graphs in the document. I'd like to have a color copy so I can process and interpret the information in a more accurate manner. And then the last item is, I hope that as board members and administrators, you're supporting your teachers in the classroom with the discipline issues that they're dealing with on a daily basis. I hope there is not a preoccupation in this district to look good on the dashboard, so to speak. While teachers are struggling with these students on a daily basis in their classroom, obviously, you know it has an impact to the learning in the classroom, and if they're dealing with difficult behaviors and disruptions without proper support, then it impacts the learning of the other students in the class. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Brenda Angulo.
Good evening, board members. I had the pleasure of participating in JUSD's in-house restorative justice professional development training by Jose Campos. It was a two-day training focused on the importance of implementing restorative practices for students struggling with adverse childhood experiences and trauma, which is prevalent in our community. Research supported strategies like reflective circles and prompts for deep questioning were suggested to resolve student conflict and improve the social culture in the class by establishing a community and belonging. We also learned about the importance of letting students share their experiences after traumatic events such as a shooting or a death. And I really appreciated this training, especially as a teacher from Sunny Slope Elementary, where we are facing behavior issues from kindergarten to sixth grade, with some of our heavier issues coming from first grade. So with that in mind, I would like to pose a few hypothetical situations, and I'll let you read between the lines. Then think about the two options that I've posed. One is action taken, and another one is going to be a restorative justice approach. So hypothetical situation, a first-grade student is reluctant to work in class, constantly physically attacking others, destroys the classroom, which requires the rest of the students to evacuate the class. Would you have the teacher write weekly lesson plans with NGSS and Common Core standards attached with little to no feedback? Or would you reflect with a parent, teacher, and a principal and possibly have law enforcement present using a reflective circle? Another situation, first-grade student reluctant to work in class, constantly physically attacking others, destroys the class, which requires the rest of the students to evacuate the classroom. Option A, implement a sticker chart for positive reinforcement and send the staff office, bilingual aides, or supervisors to the class when the student decides to run out of class or destroy the class. Or option B, work to restore the damage that they've caused with restorative justice approaches to reform the relationship between the child and the victim. Another situation, a first-grade student who is constantly physically and verbally assaulting students and staff trips a teacher. Would you, A, input the situation on cue as a parent phone call, or work to restore the damage that they've caused with restorative justice approaches to reform the relationship between the child and the victim? Another option, a student is found selling drugs with drugs and paraphernalia with a suspicion of use. Would you suspend the student involved or interview all students involved to get to the root of the problem, conduct a circle of support and accountability for drug use, and do a reentry circle for students who come back from on-school suspension? Also have a debrief with staff about the prevalent use of drugs on campus, and have a parent meeting for preventative issues, since the staff has politely asked for a debrief. Another situation, a group of fifth graders were caught using tobacco vapes, and would you, A, have detention and establish a behavior contract or interview all students involved to get to the root of the problem, conduct a reflective circle for accountability, and do a reentry circle for students involved? And I would just like to end, ten more seconds. I would like to end by commending the work that's happening at Ina Arbuckle. It's an elementary that has received a grant, and they have implemented restorative justice practices throughout the school, where the principal and staff are trained, and they encourage to use these RJ approaches. The staff is really happy, and they're with the responses given by the principal and the emails that he sends to staff after issues have been dealt with. And that would just be a really ideal situation for Sunny Slope, especially since we are not able to have an assistant principal. It'd be nice to have restorative justice implemented and as a key focus. Thank you.
Wendy Echols.
I'm just going to do a couple thank yous real quick. First of all, congratulations to the Patriot Cheer Team, and congratulations to the staff and the teachers at Patriot High School for teaching these excellent students on their way to their success. Additionally, I want to give a shout out to the Sunny Slope teachers, who have been here more than once to deal with the issues at their school, and I'm hoping that things are starting to change, but obviously, as you can see, there are some serious issues that they're dealing with there. I came today really to say thank you again to Mr. Brooks, Mr. Dubrasky, who's not here, Mr. Duchon, because we've started doing some work on some of these issues. We had an excellent B-cell meeting, B-cell Committee meeting, Behavioral, Social, Emotional Learning Committee, and we will be meeting again the first of April. It's not a fool's day, it's just April 1st. And we hope to continue having these exact discussions. We also had the Joint Wellness Committee meeting, and again, I feel we're having another meeting set up on April 2nd, which I feel we're going to continue looking not just at the social emotional wellness of our students, but also of our teachers and our staff. Because again, if your workers aren't happy, if your teachers aren't happy, then your students won't be happy. So I want to say thank you to them for continuing along that work, but it still doesn't alleviate a lot of the issues. I've come here before to talk about workload concerns, and I'm just going to list off something that came to my attention that I wanted to share with you today. These are TK through sixth-grade workload concerns. Number one, report card testing, ABC sounds, high-frequency words, number recognition, counting, shapes, colors, arranging numbers, patterns, and these are all one-on-one testing, and it takes about three weeks to do that. TK, end-of-the-year assessments, takes twenty to thirty minutes per student. DIBELS, four different standards per kid, ten minutes per student, approximately two to three hundred minutes each trimester. TLP, two to three hours each trimester, no release time for less than six students. Each TLP takes twenty to thirty minutes. Units of study, performance tasks, one-to-one tests, math and language arts. Internet safety, iSafe lessons, twenty to thirty minutes per lesson. B-cell, input into Q, having to deal with disruptive disciplinary issues, procedures for evacuation, at least fifteen minutes per student. Inclusion collaboration, almost no time is given to be able to collaborate with teachers who are teaching inclusion right now with their education specialists. Not enough time having to do it, only on their personal time. Guided reading, one to two hours a week of prep time, and in all classes, a guiding reading session isn't even necessary. Avid, one to two hours extra per week and time to place items in evidence binders. Impact teams, data presentation for second-year teams, project boards, not enough time to do the work that you're having to use their actual prep time in order to get these things finished. SST narratives, special education surveys, iStation tests, independent study contracts. Collaborative time is so directed that departments and grade levels can't even truly collaborate. I bring this to your attention because we're here to do right by our kids, and so much of this stuff takes away from the very focus of what we need to be doing, hours and hours a week. When I have teachers who are texting me from their classrooms at seven o'clock at night on a daily basis, that's a problem. And they do it for the kids. We are all here for the students. We want to see the successes that they have there at Patriot. But again, I'd like to end it with this today. Schools can't become the best places for students to learn and grow unless we make them the best places for teachers to work and grow. Thank you.
Any other further public comments? I have no more cards. Thank you. We'll move on to administrative reports and written communication. Mr. Duchon.
The first report is Dr. Hanson.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
So tonight, I'd like to just give a quick update, facilities update, as well as a quick update on some of the work that was done leading up to the election for Measure E. During the campaign process, we were prevented from sharing too much information in a setting such as this, and so I'd like to at least share some information with the board tonight. So as you're aware, there was a lot of work that went into prior to the election taking place. So we incorporated a variety of different communication efforts, as well as having a special study session. We utilized what we call Thought Exchange, which is a program that allows us to interact with the community, with all stakeholders, parents, staff, students. The Horizon, we utilized the Horizon to push out information, social media, Q Communications. A website was created and placed on our district website, as well as a campaign website was also created. A variety of social media posts and communications were sent out, highlighting the projects that were completed with Measure EE to show the community the work that has been completed over the last six or seven years. In addition, we held a variety of community meetings for the Facilities Master Plan to gather input from our community, from our staff, from our students, and were able to incorporate that information. And you saw, as Ms. Char had alluded to earlier, the video that was created for the Facilities Master Plan. Of course, after the board put the bond on the ballot, voted to do that, a campaign committee was formed. Within that committee, over eight weeks, eight to ten weeks, a variety of different activities took place. There was mailers that went home, phone banking for the last six weeks leading up to the election, phone banking twice a week. We also did precinct walks the last two weekends leading up to the election in the community, utilizing volunteers, and even students came out to help with that as well. We did a variety of meetings and presentations to local organizations throughout the community, as well as our elected officials. That was ongoing efforts both before the board approved to put the, or to call for the election, as well as during the campaign process. So a lot of time and energy and efforts were put in by a variety of volunteers throughout the community, and so I wanted to kind of show what that process looks like leading up to the election, since I wasn't able to do so during the campaign. Next, just to give a quick update on the Glen Avon modernization process and progress. So the new office and library will open in the, as we start the new school year in 2020, so in August 2020, the new office and library will open. The first classroom wing will be complete here in the next couple of weeks, and then we still have the last couple of wings that will be completed, but the overall estimated completion will be just early 2021. So that project is well underway. West Riverside Elementary, so as you all know, the new office, library, and new classroom wings were opened when we came back from Christmas break, and so that facility, as well as what we call the 400 Wing, which is now the Admiral Hill Building, was also opened and being utilized currently. So the last wing there is the 500 Wing, and there's still, and then obviously the playground area, so the field space. The new playgrounds are installed, the kindergarten and upper grades, and so just working on the new field space, the new track and play area for the students, as well as the, what was the former office is being converted into classrooms and instructional spaces. Harupa Middle School, so currently, those are under revision right now by the State of, Division of State Architect. So those comments are going back and forth as they approve the plans, and this project will get started hopefully this summer. We'll start on the new parking lot area and then work into the modernization of the school. And so that will take us to the end of the Measure EE dollars with Harupa Middle. This will be our largest project and our most expensive project. And then this last slide is just to kind of give an update on some of these major EE projects that have been completed and the cost savings that we were able to gain with each of these projects, these six projects here, Ina Arbuckle, Mission Bell, Sunny Slope Elementary, the two-story classroom building there, Harupa Valley Innovation Center, Rubito High School, and then also the stadium, not necessarily the stadium, but the field and turf replacement at Rubito High School. These six projects, we were able to come under budget and retain a little bit of that Measure EE dollars to put forth, towards Harupa Middle and other projects that we need to do to close out some of the remaining projects that we have. So just a brief update tonight and open for any questions.
I would like to make a quick comment too.
Yep.
The votes are still out, although we think they're pretty indicative of where they will end up. There was certainly a trend across the state. If Prop 13, unfortunately named, does not pass, it will be the first school-wide statewide school bond that did not pass since 1994. Just as a matter of fact, it did not increase anyone's taxes, although it was believed to do so. It was, we encountered a fairly strong anti-tax sentiment in the community, and I will talk about that if we end up doing a postmortem after the votes are counted. In the meantime, I really want to thank everyone, many of our employees, many of our CSEA employees were out there, walking, calling, phoning, hanging, signs, putting signs up. Many of our students were involved, staff. Many of our students were involved, staff from every school in the district were sitting doing phone banking, and I think every one of them enjoyed it as much as I do, meaning that none of us were born salesmen. We don't like making cold calls, but it was for a wonderful cause, and we'll find out pretty soon whether, where we ended up. I want to commend the board. It was absolutely the right thing to do, to put this on the agenda of a public ballot and let the people decide. And that will give you a budget that the public has essentially decided for you, whether it passes or whether it doesn't, and we will ultimately report on where our facilities plan will end up based on the final vote with the bond. Dr. Hanson and his department were absolutely amazing, I mean, just working 24/7, heart, soul, blood, sweat, and tears, every analogy you can think of went into this. It was truly just a commendable effort. So thank you, thank you to the board, thank you to each and every person that volunteered and put their hard work into this. It was truly a community effort, and we'll just keep on rolling along till we find out the results, then we'll do what we can. So thank you, Dr. Hanson, thank you to all the people who helped out.
Thank you. Any comments?
Yes. I would like to say to Dr. Hanson and to everyone else, if this bond issue had passed, you know we would have done a good job getting those schools that had to wait and getting them up to par like the rest of our schools. And when you see this, the report that says that we did six projects, and not one of them went over budget, one of them was $1 million under budget, and these plans went into effect a couple of years before this, I mean, these were planned out before. So with the rising costs of things, I think our district did an outstanding job. Everyone that worked on this project, these projects, did an outstanding job. I came on the board after it had already been decided to put a bond issue out there. I'm proud to say that I was there when it passed, and I just think that everyone should be proud of what we have done in the past, the beautification that it's done to our city is just outstanding. I mean, there's just talk continually about the schools, and if you have not been around to the schools, you really need to drive around to the ones that are finished and the ones that are in progress right now, because they are amazing changes. That's all I have to say. I mean, I've been a person living in this district all my life, and it's amazing. Thank you.
Dr. Hanson, I'd like you to pass along my personal admiration to the people who did the phone banking. I used to do cold calling for my own business, and I know how terrifying that can be, and I thought, here are the teachers calling on top of their workdays, whatever days they had with their students and their coworkers, and still caring enough to be brave and dial a number of a person unknown to him or her, and I just thought that was marvelous. Unfortunately, I wasn't home at the time of the phone calls, they just left messages, otherwise I would have said, I admire your bravery, and thank you so much for doing that for our students, staff, and our children, and the future. When I moved into the district in Sky Country, my kids had a brand-new school, and it made me feel like, in retrospect, now that it's eligible for refurbishment, I think the rest of the children deserve this, too, and I was very sad to see that we're not going, we're going to have to make that money go farther whenever we can. So tell them thank you again.
Dr. Hanson, I do have one question, but before, I'd like to echo some of their comments, and thank you for those many hours, and everybody else that jumped in to try to talk to our constituents and the voters. And also, I think when it comes to these type of bonds, there's just a lot of chatter, and people really didn't look into the details of it. I mean, is all along, from the beginning, I was probably the hardest sell to take this and really visiting some of those programs or the projects you did with the modernization. I mean, your talents and your conscious to stay within budget is just, you don't see that anywhere, I mean, even in other types of construction. So I just want to thank you all for your time and your effort to really invest in trying to get our voters to see that we could really use those funds to improve our schools, and then also even those endorsements. I mean, we did get some big names on there to, you know, try to express the reasons why we need this and in support of the bond. The question I had was at the last page where you had mentioned the total, the original contracts. Did you say that the final amount, that does include JMS, or it does not include JMS?
That wouldn't include JMS. These are closeout projects.
Okay, closeout.
Those are projects that are closed out, yeah.
Okay. That's what I just wanted to make sure. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to thank you, Dr. Hanson, for your leadership throughout the campaign, and I think everyone else who volunteered their time really demonstrates, with all the sacrifice, demonstrates your commitment, dedication to our students. So please make sure you thank your team as well, and great job with Measure EE and as much as we've been able to do. So, thank you all.
Thank you. And just for clarification, Ms. Bradford, we didn't have any teachers that phone banked, but I will thank the administration and our classified staff who supported and participated in those efforts.
I thought I had, I thought, okay, she must have said staff.
Possibly. And then one of our biggest endorsements, Ms. Regal, you talked about endorsements. CSEA was a big endorser for us, and we really appreciate not only their public support, but also their public endorsement, so.
Yeah, I also wanted to echo my board colleagues and thanking you, Ms. Dr. Hanson, and the classified employees that, you know, took that time off and really, you know, dedicated to, again, when we talk about education, facilities is a big thing, too. I know you cheer, that are still here, love practicing in a safe environment, right? You couldn't do so without one, and when you get a little bit older, you understand that, you know, what other individuals go out and vote and what's on a ballot is really important to your future and to the next generation of cheerleaders that are also going to, you know, take your lead. And it was really important to put this on the ballot so that it can go on in November for, you know, passing, and unfortunately, it didn't, and it shows again in our community that we really need to prioritize education and facilities and the environment that you are doing your studies is also, and your activities is very important. So we'll wait till next time, but thank you so much. I really admire the dedication and time that it took you, Dr. Hanson, and some convincing to do as well, so thank you from the bottom of my heart. We appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on to review tentative schedule for 2019, 2020 awards and graduation dates.
I'll take that one.
Okay.
It's in your agenda. I will do you the pleasure of not reading each line in each graduation date and the ceremonies, but please note them all. I know that in the near future, Denise will be sending out a sign-up sheet for your attendance at the awards and graduations and accepting the classes. We look forward to them, so please take a look at that schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Other administrative reports and written communication.
Yes, Madam President. I would like to give a brief report on COVID-19, or the Corona, actually, it's the new coronavirus. I am learning more each day. It is complicated. So I want to start out by saying, we began our planning almost three weeks ago, meeting as a cabinet, in conversations with what's called the Riverside University Health System, Public Health. I will, with your indulgence, just call them County Health, because it's easier for me to remember them that way. They are the designated health authority in this county, and they have the sole jurisdiction over making, issuing health directives and quarantines and any orders to public agencies, private quarantines, or anything else. So let me tell you what we have done, what we are doing, and what we plan to do. We were immediately in contact with them, followed their directives, sent out information regarding, and it's posted on the website, on Twitter, on Facebook, and I believe it went through Peachjar also. No, no Peachjar. Okay. Essentially with guidelines from the CDC and Health Department attached regarding what every individual could do in terms of a health situation. Fortunately, we have had no one in this district that I know of at least exposed or diagnosed with coronavirus. And again, please know that there is nothing we can do to find that out unless someone reports that. On February 28th, we enacted our plan to put hand sanitizer into every classroom, began ordering immediately, and found out even at that time, much was sold, and we've gotten through about 20% of the classrooms. We have hand sanitizer on order, if any of you have been to Costco, the Dollar Store, Target, Stater Brothers, or any other place other than distilling it yourself, there is no hand sanitizer around. Soap and water does work. We have stressed positive health issues with all of our staff, students, that is the biggest prevention that we can take. We did issue a directive to principals that field trips would be allowed to go on unless they were going to a place where there was an established risk. So therefore, even though it was a minimal risk, where three people were identified in UCLA, again, out of, I'm not sure, the campus is probably 60,000 students and goodness knows how many tens of thousands of people, but we nevertheless, in the utmost of caution, did not allow a field trip to go there. We are currently scanning any large events to be held in the district and whether they will continue. Things, as you know, change on a daily basis. The newspapers and media give much directives. Our authority comes only from Riverside County Health. We follow them religiously. The postings are on the website. We have notified all principals to be aware of what's happening, again, with staff and students, but we do not have the authority really to call a student and say, are you ill? They have rights, and their rights do have exercise, at least in this society, something very important. We are washing down the classrooms nightly. Did I miss anything? I think we're doing everything we can, we're allowed to do. Only the health officer, Dr. Cameron Kaiser, can actually issue a declaration to close a school for health reasons. That does not mean, there may not be other circumstances or other districts that have closed schools, but generally, they can and should work directly with county authorities. I know that Murieta High School was closed for one day in cooperation, but I'm not sure was that the direction of, that seemed to be unclear. There was one staff member exposed, and 71 people exposed to that staff member. They were awaiting the result of the virus testing. Unfortunately, as I'm sure you've all read, there is a shortage of testing across the country, and that certainly has hampered everybody's efforts to place controls on how it is spread. I am not an expert, I don't believe any of us are, and even the information from health officers differs throughout the country, so we're trying to take into account everything we can possibly absorb. If we disagree, which we have not, by the way, with County Health Department, they have done an excellent job, taken a conservative but rational approach. We will take our direction from them and follow on, literally, a multiple times per day basis. We were on, I believe, there was an earlier one, a phone conference this afternoon we were on, the next one, I believe, is Wednesday. All of our questions have been submitted to the Health Department. They have answered all of them. We are doing everything we can to secure sanitizers. If anybody knows where to find it, let us know. It's very odd, and by the way, it's international. My wife got a message from her cousin in Australia saying, is everybody buying toilet paper there, too? I'm not sure why toilet paper. I think hand sanitizer is more important right now, but go figure. We're all preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. I will also note that we don't know if this is a seasonal issue. We're hoping it is. It seems to have diminished in China, although the information from China, as we all know, is not necessarily accurate, nor, may I say, is all the information in the media. We have relied on official sources to make our decision-making. Again, we'll update on a daily basis, anything that we have. We sent out a notice to staff on Friday and parents, it's posted on the website, again, asking people if they're ill to stay home, if they have fevers to self-report, if they have underlying issues and are concerned, please bring them to our attention. If anybody feels they are in a compromised health position, you know, underlying respiratory illnesses, on some type of immunosuppressant medication, then please let us know, and we will work with them, staff, students, or anyone in the community. Be happy to answer any questions. I cannot clarify the confusion in the world.
Any questions?
Are we advising students or parents that if their child has even just onsets of a cold, are we asking them to stay home or just use their best judgment? I mean, who knows? You go visit Aunt Ruth in Los Angeles, that happened to be at the same Rite Aid picking up medication, and then Aunt Ruth gets picked up weeks later. I mean, are we telling our students and families to use their best judgment or stay home?
We cannot force a child to stay home. We don't have the authority to do that. We have requested that anybody is ill, staff or student, to stay home, particularly if they have a fever and go to the doctor.
Any other comments, questions?
Ms. Ortega?
Yes.
I would hate for the night to move forward. Going back to my presentation, I'd also like to thank, I want to hear from her later, Wendy as well. Wendy was part of our robo-call that went out, a robo-message, and so, not that we use her for her name, but I know that she has, you know, her name recognition, that was very important as well, to get her, to put out a robo-call message to our community leading up to the election. So I'd hate, as I'm going off the top of my head, all these people, I definitely don't want to leave her out. So thank you, Wendy as well.
Thank you very much, again, Wendy, and all of you that really dedicated your time and went above and beyond. Thank you, we all appreciate it as a community, and thank you very much for the report, Mr. Duchon. We thank you for that. And moving forward. Yeah, do we want to refresh our screens, please? Hold public hearing on initial proposal for negotiations. Mr. Brooks.
Yes, as required by law and board policy, the board should conduct a public hearing on the initial negotiations proposal from NEA Harupa for the 2020-2021 school year. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to express its opinion to the board, considering the initial proposal for negotiations, which is included in the backup materials. This time, the board president should formally open and close the public hearing. This time, the board president should formally open and close the public hearing on the proposal.
Thank you. We open the public hearing. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we close this hearing session. Item two, hold public hearing on initial negotiation proposal. Mr. Brooks.
Likewise, as required by law and board policy, the board should conduct a public hearing on the initial proposal for negotiations with NEA Harupa. This is the proposal from the district for the 2020-2021 school year. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to express its opinion to the board concerning this initial negotiations proposal, which is included in the backup materials. Again, the board president should formally open and close the public hearing on the proposal.
Thank you. We formally open the public hearing. Any questions or comments? Seeing none from the public, we close the hearing session. Thank you. Now we can refresh our screens. Any motion?
Don't move. Second.
First by trustee Chart and second by trustee Regal. Questions or comments?
Yes.
Trustee Bradford?
Mr. Brooks, I have a couple of questions. First regarding the lactation accommodation, there is a reference to something in conditions under which it may be denied, and I'm wondering what those are. I mean, obviously, if somebody's driving a school bus, but I just couldn't imagine why you would, what are those conditions?
Frankly, trustee Bradford, I have not contemplated under any conditions that we would deny such an accommodation. I can only imagine perhaps in an emergency circumstance or something to that effect. At the same time, we need to be able to outline that, and that's something that's outlined in the law, is that we have that option if dire circumstances existed. Otherwise, we have every intention to do, as we always have, which is to accommodate that.
I thought that would be true, but since it was previously referenced in existing regulation, I thought, okay, you know, who is, what is it in your spare time? Okay, yeah. Okay, I have another question, just a second. Oh, never mind, those were answered earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move for the, we'll move for the vote. Item 24B, certified 2019-2020, second interim financial report. Mrs. Ford.
Thank you, and the presentation should be coming up in just a moment. Great. Thank you, Vidas. So in December, the board certified the district's first interim financial report, and tonight, administration is requesting the board certify the second interim financial report. The second interim report is the district's financial position through January 31st of 2020. As with our first interim financial report, the second interim report will be submitted with a positive certification. However, there are some significant areas to highlight for the current year and for the 2020-21 budget year that I want to go over with the board. So the first is on page three of your handout. It summarizes the changes in revenue and expenditures since first interim. Since the first interim report, there was an increase in unrestricted medical administrative revenue as well as local donations, and then there was also an addition of an early literacy and differentiated assistant grant, which resulted in a slight increase in restricted revenues. The result of these changes is a net general fund revenue increase of $418,000. There have also been changes in expenditures, with decreases in unrestricted expenditures attributed to a reduction in contracted services, self-insurance, and the cost of planned maintenance projects. Increases in restricted expenditures represent spending of the two new grants that I just mentioned and additional supplies and service costs. The net increase in expenditures, excuse me, the net decrease in expenditures is $1.7 So looking at the, page four, which is a high-level summary of the district's multi-year projection, the multi-year projection includes a projected current year increase to the district's ending fund balance of $3.2 million. For budget years 2020 and 21, we are projecting flat revenue and increased expenditures. This will result in spending down, the spending down of our ending fund balance, otherwise known as deficit spending. Keep in mind that this is based on the information that we have from the governor's January proposal, and we know that there will be changes between his proposal and the May revision. We have wages and health and welfare contributions budgeted flat with only step and column movement included in the multi-year projection. There are several factors that are impacting the district's multi-year budget. One factor is the district's declining enrollment, and on page five, you have a chart that illustrates the district is in a declining enrollment situation and declining average daily attendance. Our current year CalPads enrollment was certified with a decline of 256 students, and we are projecting additional declines in both the 2020-21 and the 21-22 school years. On page six of your handout, you'll see a summary of revenue loss due to decline in enrollment. So this is just revenue that we could have, if we maintained enrollment, we would not have lost this level of revenue each year. So that's resulted in approximately $6 million in lost revenue. I wanted to mention the district's unduplicated pupil percentage. That is also in a decline, a slight decline, but that impacts our district's supplemental and concentration funding. So current year, it's 78.24%, with a projected decline of 77.14% and 76.84% in the out-years. That percentage is based on a three-year rolling average, and so we do anticipate that we'll see a decline in that. The percentage is recalculated each year, and it is based on our low income, our English learners, and our foster youth students. The line graph on page seven of your handout represents our contribution to support our special education programs. As you can see, from 2014-15 school years through the 2018-19, we had nearly a $10 million increase in the amount of general fund dollars that we had to redirect or contribute to our special education program. We continue to experience increased special education costs, and we do budget for, you'll see in the budget, that we have $1 million in escalation costs put in our budget for So, and one other factor I want to mention, which is on this chart here, is one, you're very familiar with, is the increase in STIRS and PERS costs. And the projection, multi-year projection, does have our increased STIRS and PERS costs built in, and as you can see on this chart, that increased cost is $1.4 million for STIRS and $1.3 million for PERS for the 2021 school year. And then again, as I mentioned, we also include a million-dollar escalation in special education contribution increases, but we have experienced escalation costs that have exceeded that in the past two years. So even with these cost pressures, as of second interim, the district is meeting its required 3% reserve, and as always, staff will monitor the state as well as the district budget and make appropriate adjustments as necessary.
Thank you so much for the report. Any questions or comments? Trustee Bradford.
Mrs. Ford, would you please describe what your office is doing as a Plan B for worst case?
Well, this is really a district, it's not just my office, it's definitely the district as a whole. Yes. And so we are looking at staffing, we're closely monitoring our staffing levels, I'm working closely with Mr. Brooks on that, and in addition, we're looking at our contracts and services. So anywhere where we can see where we can curb some costs, we're looking at the ability to do that.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yeah, trustee Garcia.
Mrs. Ford, thank you first of all for the detailed report. Appreciate it. Just a couple of questions. So decreasing enrollment, compared to other districts, what are we looking at? I mean, how do we compare to other districts?
So in the state, in the state as a whole, there's a decline of a 0.4%, and they anticipate that decline is going to continue, that average decline will continue through 2027, 2028. So we're not alone in this situation. There's other districts. In Riverside County, there are only five districts that actually had increase in enrollment, and the rest of the districts are all in declining. And it's, you know, some small, you know, half a percent decline, some 2% decline. So it does vary. For us this year, it was a 1.3% decline. So it was significant for this year.
Thank you. And also, in the past five years, we've increased quite a bit, special ed unfunded mandates, right?
Yes.
And so I know we, we look at the report, it's a million dollars, right? I mean, what do we anticipate in the next five years or even in the next year?
Well, if the trend continues, we're going to see $2-3 million in escalation costs in special education.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Trustee Regal?
Yes. You know, on the, I think it's page three where you said the net decrease in expenditures, $1.7 million? That's just through January, correct?
Yes, that's as of January 31st.
Okay, that's what I just.
But that's what we're anticipating through the entire year.
Oh, for the, it will, anticipated for the entire year, but not just through that point?
Right.
And then also, I wanted to, the special education contributions, is there any sort of conversation going on even at the county or state level? Because we know that these prices are increasing, the services, we're seeing a broader spectrum of students that we need to assist, but of course, you know, the cost is rising, and this could be, you know, contributing to the potential deficit. I mean, is there plans or services that they're looking into that are more affordable?
What they're looking at is actually funding special education to the level that it needs to be funded. So for an example, the federal government is supposed to fund special education 40% of the cost of what it would cost to educate a student with special needs, and they're funding about 13% of that. So the state is looking at how can they provide additional funding to support the growth in special education and the high needs. So it's not only are we growing in the number of students that are requiring those services, but the number of special needs of, you know, of the types of services that are needed are, the cost of those are increasing. So more students with autism, you know, more students with emotional disturbance behaviors. So with that, there needs, additional services need to be provided, and those are all costly. So they're looking at all of those things, and this is definitely something that is at the top of our legislators' top priority for them, to look at both the pension, increased pension costs, and the special education escalation costs. They are looking at those, and the thing I can say is, you know, let your legislators know that we need, we need help with this.
Okay, if it's on the top priority, and not that I'm trying to challenge you, but what is the timeline of that? Is that something that, yes, we're going to have conversation, they vote on it in August, and we might see it in 2021, 2022, or 2025? I mean, what does that, what does that look like for our districts?
Well, they're having conversations about that right now. So that's happening in Sacramento as we speak. It's something that, like I said, it's a top priority. They know that every district is facing these, even small districts are facing increased costs in special education, and they know that it's something that school districts can't solve on their own. So they're going, we're going to need support from the state to be able to do that.
I need to kind of add, I'll be real clear on the budget part. So in the governor's budget, there was $940,000, I believe, million dedicated to staff development, most of it one-time, that would be grant-based. The advocates are urging that that money go to offset the special ed encroachment. For us, the special ed encroachment is about $25 million, 10% of our budget. There's also another $400,000 that the governor directed to preschool special ed services that are one-time, but once we spend them, our obligation is forever because of federal law. So those are urgent, they're being addressed at the department level, I mean, at the governor's level, and with many, many advocates in Sacramento. The other part is to fund some of the pension costs outside of Prop 98, not within Prop 98. The state budget is healthy as of now. But you mentioned something else, and I think it's really important to note about whether people were looking for less expensive or less costly services. I think the education community is completely committed to providing the appropriate services, and they continue to be more expensive. And in fact, federal law and Supreme Court cases have made it clear that the objectives for special ed students need to be clear, they need to be met, and they need to be monitored, and all of this leads to more expensive services. And even some of the issues you heard about earlier in terms of disruptive students in the classroom are governed by special education laws and mandates, even some of the requirements for dismissal and exclusions for dismissal, I mean dismissal and discipline. So it is a very complex issue, and I think no one is against providing the very best services for special education. That's our goal, that's teachers' goals, that's the legislators' goals, and in fact, it's a top priority if you go talk to federal legislators, but they have never increased the cost. It's, I hate to be so glib as to say it's lip service, but so far, it's lip service. And I've been in Washington for the last six, seven, eight years advocating for this specific issue, we're always met with open arms and closed checkbooks, and it is not, fortunately, at this point, I hope the state will change and redirect money to allow us to cover that encroachment, but, I don't know, I was going to ask Mrs. Ford what the increase is now, it's probably doubled in the last 10 years percentage-wise. You don't have to pull the number out, just, I'll rest on just a seat-of-the-pants guess, but it's gone up millions of dollars per year, and because students have real needs, and I have to say, the results are phenomenal. If you look at the abilities of our special ed students, of our students with disabilities, they overcome once, what we're once thought to be non-overcomable, how's that for a new word? Disabilities. Our teachers are doing tremendous things with special education students, but they're intense. but they're intensive, they're costly, and as you heard earlier, they're a lot of work. And many of the students have one-on-one aids. We have students with two-on-one aids. And that is really not going to change. I think as we continue to refine what we can do for students, and I continue to identify students, the costs are going to go up. It's really the will of the budget. And I think there's, you know, there's, I'm going to make this political thing too. There's probably going to be a measure in November that will deal with taxes. And it's going to have a tough time because people don't want to pay more taxes. But the result is that it doesn't get the funding to students that need it. I'll end on that. Sheri Noe.
Thank you.
No, and I do, I do agree. When Assembly Sabrina Cervantes came, and we were in Patriot High School. She asked, you know, what are some of the top needs? And that's what I told her. I was like, we hear from, you know, teachers, we hear from our district staff that it's obviously funding, but knowing where to, you know, where exactly to fund that. And it's special education that we do see all those increases. And we don't see that financial support from, from the other, you know, state and federal levels that we are, we are in a burden with that, you know, with that situation. But have high hopes that, you know, they do both the open arms and the open checks, like Mr. Duchan says, because it's, it will open. They open them up and they write them up because it is, it's something that is very needed. And it's, it's an issue that's, it's increasing. So we thank you so much for the report, Mrs. Ford.
Can I just have one other little section of this? Which is, we're also required to provide details of all our funds and present those to the board. And so you have that as supporting documents. And we anticipate that all other funds will end the year either with a balanced budget or a positive fund balance and cash flow. So administration does recommend that the board certify that the district will be able to meet its general fund financial obligations for all three years and will maintain a positive ending fund balance in all other funds.
I'll call for motions.
Move for approval?
Second.
First by trustee Garcia, second by trustee Card. We'll take the vote. Passes 5-0. Item 24C, award bid number 19/20/04PD in Aina Arbuckle Elementary School. Dr. Hanson.
Yes, this is for the third and final phase of the Aina Arbuckle Project. This scope will include installation of new paving, fire lane, doing a lot of site mitigation, and also a new playground and rubberized surface for our preschool students. So administration recommends this evening to the board award a contract in the amount of $699,000 to bog engineering for the Aina Arbuckle Elementary School site playground.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Card, second by trustee Abozatai. So we'll say Bradford, trustee Bradford. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move for the vote. Passes 5-0. Item 24D, approved 2020 mandated core academic and special education summer school program, grades K to 12.
Thank you, Madam President. The information is contained in your board documents, which includes the courses that will be offered at each of our three comprehensive high schools. The core academics as well as the special education program services that will be offered both elementary and secondary. The recommendation is that you approve, the board approve, the 2020 mandated core academic special education summer school program, grades K-12.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Second.
First by trustee Bradford, second by trustee Garcia. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. What is the Jolt? What is that?
The Jolt is the online learning platform for our students. It's a computer-based.
And that's not offered, like the math one is not offered at Rubido. What is the reason for that?
Summer school course offerings are driven by the student need and urgency. So for example, it would be incoming seniors who have the greatest priority. And the offerings for, that best meet their needs would be those that are provided during summer school. And then it would continue to trickle down like juniors and sophomores. So it really depends on the student needs and/or the course requests that come forward. Those are the courses that are, that are offered at each of our sites.
Is that based on the staff or is that based on the students at the junior high level?
Purely student-driven. So once the course offerings are determined based on student needs, it's at that time then that staff is recruited for those positions.
Do we have a lot of students that attend the summer school? I mean, do the campuses, kind of the classrooms are pretty meaningful, full of students?
Absolutely. The need is much greater than our ability to provide the coursework necessary during summer. So absolutely, it's filled to the brim each and every summer.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Truheal?
Yes, sir.
So a quick question. So the details says here, State of California provides funding which allows school districts to provide these programs. So is that special funding for this?
I think for asking, I'm not sure about the funding mechanism for summer school.
We entitle through the LCAP for summer school. So it's, it's through local control funding.
I was just curious because we just talked about special ed.
Yeah.
At length and, you know.
Special ed, yes, federally funded and, yeah, and base funding. It would not be your supplemental concentration part of your LCAP.
Thank you, Terri. Thank you, Mr. Truheal.
There used to be categorical funding for summer school when categorical programs were removed and districts were given the choice of how to spend money. This particular money comes out of the supplemental concentration, and it's for increased and improved services who are part of our target populations. Did I get that right?
Thank you. We'll move on for the vote. Passes 5-0. Item 24E, approve sub, sub middle of winter 2020 release of consolidated application.
I know, that's what I deal with all the time.
I try, thank you.
It was good. The consolidated application has multiple data collection windows every year, but there's two primary windows. One in the spring where we say, yes, we want the federal funding, and we have to mark it. And then we do another one in the winter, which is typically around the beginning of February. We have to complete the window that says, these are our final entitlements. So we're really working off of tentative entitlements until we actually get the entitlements in February. So we apply for the federal program entitlements through Title I. We receive about $5,623,728, which is, it's a little bit less. All of the federal funds are a little bit less. And I think it's because of enrollment that some of these entitlements are going down a little bit. These are all restricted funding pots. You know, they have specific things you can use them for. And so when you see restricted, most of that is in relationship to these pots. Title II, we receive about $626,783. And it's really for staff development. We use it primarily for staff development in our district. Title III, our LEAP, our Limited English Proficient Funding, around $624,027. And this is really for support of our limited English proficient kids and stuff. So Title IV is fairly new. We received that funding probably for about two years. And it's in the amount of $417,510. And it's intended to increase capacity of students to have access to a well-rounded education, which is pretty broad in context. But it's really college and career readiness, some of those pieces. A little bit of money for technology, some for behavioral mental health support as well. So it's about the well-rounded student. You'll see most of these funded, funding pieces indicated in the LCAP, but you'll also see at the site level in their school plans. So when you, their school plans come to you for approval, you'll see the Title I that the schools receive and how they focus that funding towards the needs of their kids at their specific sites. Administration recommends the board approves the middle of the winter 2020 release of consolidated application.
Move for approval?
Second.
First trustee Garcia, second by trustee Card. Any questions or comments? Trustee Bradford?
I have two, two questions. First, it calls itself an application, but it reads more like a report. Is there something I don't understand?
It's a web-based portal. So you, you can't change the amounts, no matter if we want more money. We can't put it in there. It's actually, they tell us how much it is, and then you have to fill in all of the little web.
Okay, so it is a report.
It's a report.
Okay. It appears to say that the school with the least percentage of low-income students is Rustic Lane with 48%. And even Del Sol has a greater percent, 57%. Is this a correct interpretation?
Let me see. That doesn't sound right.
Yeah, it doesn't sound right, but that's what it said. And I'm, mine's digital, so I can't pull up the page real fast to tell you where it is. But what it says is the least.
If you see, you may be looking at the school, school Y page. If you look, are you looking at the Title I school allocation page?
I'd have to pull it up on my digital file and then sort through that, Terri, so I don't know.
Yeah, it's indicating the low-income student percentage for Rustic Lane is 87.38%.
Is what?
87.38.
Huh. Okay, I'll have to look at it at my copy because what I wrote down is the least percentage of low-income students is Rustic Lane with 48%. And Del Sol has 57%. So I'll just ask you later.
Yeah, for the elementaries, the least percentage is at 47.81%. That's Camino Real.
Oh, oh, that's right, that's right. I was, you're right.
Yeah.
See? That's what I get for.
So you have to, for Title I purposes, you have to rank by that free and reduced low-income number that you were looking at. You're welcome.
Any further questions or comments? We'll call for the vote. You good, Melissa? You good? Now she is. Vote passes 5-0. Item F1, approve initial negotiations proposal from NEA Harupa, Mr. Brooks.
As I'm sure you all recall, during the board meeting on February 18th, the board received and reviewed the initial negotiations proposal from NEA Harupa following the public hearing a little earlier this evening. Administration recommends that the board approve the initial negotiations proposal from NEA Harupa as printed in the backup materials as a basis for negotiations. Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
First by trustee Regal, second by trustee Card. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move, we'll call for the vote. Vote passes 5-0. Item F2, approve initial, initial proposal for negotiations with NEA Harupa, Mr. Brooks.
During that same board meeting last month on February 18th, the board received and reviewed the district's initial proposal for negotiations with NEA Harupa. And following the hearing we held for that proposal earlier this evening, administration recommends that the board approve the initial proposal for negotiations with NEA Harupa as printed in the backup materials as a basis for our negotiations. Thank you.
Move for approval?
Second.
First trustee Garcia, second trustee Card. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Passes 5-0. Item F3, approve job description and salary range for K-12 pathway coordinator, Mr. Brooks.
The California Community College Strong Workforce Program has provided funding for regional K-12 pathway coordinators throughout our state who will work within local school districts in order to support their CTE pathways and to coordinate those efforts with their local community college districts. Due to the excellence and strength of our district CTE pathways, Harupa Unified has been selected for the opportunity to host the K-12 pathway coordinator for the Riverside Community College District. Therefore, at this time, administration is recommending that the board approve establishing the position of a K-12 pathway coordinator. Under the direction of the Director of College and Career Readiness, this position will provide managerial and technical support for all of Harupa's CTE programs and will ensure that they are coordinated and in alignment with the requirements for the community college and the needs of local industries and labor markets. Administration recommends establishing this classified management position at Range 5 on the Management Leadership Team Classified Employee Salary Schedule. And this position, it's important to note, will be funded through additional restricted funds provided by the California Community College Strong Workforce Program that are specifically designated for the K-12 pathway coordinator position. So again, at this time, administration recommends that the board approve the job description and establish the classification. and establish the classification, um, and further recommends that the board approve the salary placement for this classification on Range 5. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
First by Trustee Bradford, second by Trustee Chard. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Does this come out of Jamil Dada's budget?
I don't know Jamil Dada.
Oh, okay. He's workforce.
I'm sorry.
No, the, the workforce invests, what are they, board oversees a lot of things, but this is actually allocated by the legislature to community colleges. Don't ask me why, nobody knows why. And those, the community colleges work with consortia throughout the state of local districts, of which we belong to one under RCC, and our representative there is Ms. Pace, and that's how the money's allocated.
I'm, I'm delighted.
Any further questions, comments? Um, just to highlight, any other district could have got this position, but they decided to give it to us, correct?
Yeah, we, that's correct. Within our community college district, um, the other districts could have been chosen. Very proud that we'll be able to host this position, means Harupa's gonna get the attention of this position primarily.
So exciting. Thank you and congratulations to, um, all the, all the team.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move for, for the vote. Passes 5-0. And our final, um, item, Board Member Committee Reports. We'll start with Trustee Bradford.
We will. Sure, sure. Um, let's see, I have not had any committee meetings since our last meeting. We have budget meetings scheduled, and later this week, I have the delight of going to visit West Riverside Elementary with Superintendent Duchon. Be there or be square. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's, it's so much fun to go to the schools and, and to look at the children and to see the marvelous things that the, that our teachers do with them. It, it makes me wish somebody had encouraged me to be a teacher, uh, and I'm delighted at our, our teachers, and I always remember to say, thank you for choosing our district.
Thank you. Trustee Chard?
Thank you. I have a couple of committees to report on. Um, I attended the, uh, District Advisory Committee, um, with, jointly with the D-LAC Committee and the GATE Committees were also invited to attend. And, um, Mrs. Moreno, but I can't remember her last name now, if it's not Moreno, anyway, Terry. I'm Schultz, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're still Mrs. Moreno to me, I'm sorry. Put on a, as usual, she put on a great, um, program for the representatives from the, uh, each of the elementary schools, junior high and high schools, and some of the principals were there representing also so they could hear what she had to say. And they invited the GATE program people because she was going over the, um, uh, LCAP, yeah, LCAP, um, that day and try, and it's funny how she can stand up there and just go through everything on that LCAP so fast. It just takes years for, for her knowledge, I guess, to do that. And, um, it was very interesting to hear some of the parents, how they really got interested in it and asked the questions. They really do want to understand what is happening with the district, with the schools, with their children, and where the money's going. And that's exactly what we were talking about, and then she had several other departments that also put on presentations about that. Matter of fact, they had so many people here, usually we can sit down on the floor, and Dr. Hanson and I had to sit up here because there wasn't any room down below. It was completely full. I don't think I've ever seen that many people there, and there were still people absent. So, it was, it was a great turnout. I hope the next meeting is just as, just as full. Um, I also attended the Best of the Best, which is the last meeting for this year, and we chose the winners for January, February, and March. And so, those will be coming up, I think, next meeting, next, uh, board meeting, they'll be introduced. And that was very difficult because people are really recognizing, looking around at their sites and recognizing what people do, and they send things in. Sometimes I wish they sent more information in so we actually knew what they wanted because sometimes they'll just make a line, I want to nominate this person. But it's really interesting to see what some of these people do around the district. They don't just do their job, they do beyond, job and beyond. So, um, it was, it was really an interesting meeting. Took us a long time to decide on some of the people, so, thank you. That is all I have. I wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day next week.
Likewise, thank you. Trustee Garcia.
Thank you, Madam President. And congratulations, President Ortega, for, for the grant from the bill on Melissa Gates. It's California Latino School Boards, right? And I just wanted to congratulate you on, on your continued leadership, uh, outside of the district, and, uh, you are a good example, so people are recognizing that. And thank you, Mr. Duchon, for the COVID-19 update and, uh, giving us some, some real facts. And, um, you know, unfortunately, we gotta keep, continue, continue our daily lives. And, um, so, thank you for that. And just one, one final thing to talk about was, um, full and fair funding. And, you know, I serve on the delegate assembly for California school boards, and, uh, my good friend Wendy back there, she's, her and our, our respective associations are lobbying the, um, legislature. And, uh, last year, special ed was, uh, the big topic. And so, $25 million is a, is a lot of money to come out of the general fund. What Mr. Duchon didn't say is we spend $35 million, so most of it is, is not funded properly. And, um, in addition, things like discipline, uh, some new bills that have come out recently that have been approved that, that are not properly funded. So, I think, um, I don't know, somebody said, talk to your legislature, uh, your legislator. And, uh, I just want to encourage my fellow colleagues to do that and, and go on the CSBA website and see all the bills that are currently under consideration, see what the positions are, and, and we gotta hit them early before they get into committees so that we can really, uh, especially our local legislators here, uh, so they can really understand what challenges. And it's not just Harupa. You know, give me an example, Rim of the World, a friend up there, she's a school board president, her name's Cindy. They have challenges with transportation, so they can't, they have to bus all their students. So, that's where their money comes out of the general fund, and they don't get the, they only get the base 55 percent. So, lots of challenges out there, it's not just Harupa. But as long as we all collectively start, start really, uh, talking to our legislature, they're not gonna, they're not gonna help us, I don't think. So, that's all I had to say for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Garcia. And now, Trustee Regal.
Thank you. Uh, this afternoon, I attended the RCC NORCO, uh, President's Advisory Committee Meeting or Lunch, and, uh, whenever a few things, they're, they're really busy working on ways to increase and, and get our students to go to a JC before they take on to the university level. Uh, one thing that NORCO College was recognized, they were recipients of the prestigious Bellwether Award. So, it's an instructional program and service from the Community College Future Assembly of the Summer Advantage Program. The program was also singled out at the state level, winning the California Community College Exemplary Program Award. So, NORCO is, uh, really coming through this year, they're officially 29 years old. And I mean, if you look, they've been accredited for 10 years, and they have been really, you know, going full force to make sure that they, um, are bringing the, the best opportunities in education to, you know, our students or even students within the area. Um, there's even talks that they're potentially looking at another, um, opening another campus. So, hopefully, we can have some influence that and have something closer to Haruba Valley. I do have the, um, committee meetings at the budget, budget meeting April 2nd. And, um, I think that is all I have tonight, so, that's it.
Thank you. And I have one, um, one report, the other board and committee that I sit in with CAVE, I just want to say thank you. We had a full house, we hosted here in Harupa, our last, uh, CAVE meeting. Uh, California Bilingual Association, I sit as a president, and also for the committee for the best awards that will be hosted, hosting in, in, um, April. And there was just so many, we also, as a committee, have to sit down and decide, you know, out of the whole county, um, who is best in students and volunteer, even from like parents who volunteer, it's, it's amazing. So, um, it's, it's gonna be an amazing event. Um, that's, um, April 20th, and if anybody wants to attend, um, I think the tickets are out already. And also, thanks to, um, Mr. Duchon and our president, Union President, uh, Mrs. Echols for attending the CAVE meeting. Again, that shows the commitment that we as a district and, and in every level we have for, uh, education and, and equity. Um, so I really appreciate, um, your attendance. Also, Martha Gomez, who, um, you know, put it all together way, hours way before, um, it, the, the meeting started. So, um, it was beautiful to, to host it here as well. And I think that's, that's all my, my committees, but also, um, I would be reluctant to not, um, um, say my thank yous to Mr. Trujillo for, I'm a student of yours, uh, from middle and high school. Um, funny story, I was telling my nephew the other day, um, how you in the morning in the intercom would say, you know, whatever the news for that day was, and then towards the end you would say, um, and it's your choice to have a good day, to have a bad day. And I was telling him that my, my story, that you would always say that, until today, it's, 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 it stayed, it stuck with me. So, um, it's, it's a surprise to, to have you here as, as, uh, filling in for Mr. Duchon, but I just wanted to share that. Uh, Mr. Dubrowski, sorry. So, uh, my, yeah, my nephew was, was laughing because you were my, my, my principal in middle school, and I'm not giving out your age by no means, um, but, but it was, it was nice.
It's old.
No, but, um, it just, I, again, I share my story because you never know what student you're gonna impact and for the rest of your life. So, you've had that impact in my life and many of what we, you know, we, we were labeled at-risk youth, so I thank you, Mr. Trujillo, for, for changing my life and reminding me that the choice is, is mine. Um, and my final comment is for Denise, um, we will miss you, um, and a very well-deserved, um, break that, that you will, you will, um, have with, with your family and your loved ones. So, again, we appreciate all the work that you've done, and I also, um, uh, just admire you for, for, for sticking with, with, uh, the Harupa Unified School District family for so long. Also, I won't say your age, but, you know, you've, you've, you've served longer than, than how old I am. But that, that means, again, that means a lot, and, um, thank you. Thank you, so, no, young, maybe, but young at heart. So, I appreciate you, you all, that, that continue to have that impact in, in, in our students in a very positive way.
Just never take a stop while you're ahead.
I'm go, I'm going, no, I'm just kidding. Um, any final comments, Mr. Duchon?
Those of us over 40 might want to take another vote right now. I don't usually get to vote, but Madam President, no, thank you. I just, again, want to thank everybody and the board's courage with Measure E. I'm still keeping my fingers crossed, you never know. Um, and I can't say enough about Mrs. Collins, so I won't say anything right now, but I am going to continue to razz her as much as possible for the next four months and be very nice to Susan. So, welcome, and thanks for all you've done. We'll talk more. Good night.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.